We call the order. Carol, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have approval of minutes for September 28, 2011. Ready to meet?
Aye.
All those who've confirmed their minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Let's go to public comments. We have Kirk King.
I'm on the clock. Again. Good evening. I'm here tonight just to give you some more information. I know that item eight on the agenda is West Hamlin as part of that agenda item. But over the last couple of weeks, the last month, there have just been a lot of comments made. I've listened to different people express their concerns, their anguish, their frustration. And I've been on that roller coaster ride with them. And we've talked from everything about dollars. And tonight, I would implore the board and the powers that be to think about cents. Not just dollars, but cents. And cents is the sense of doing what's best for our children. Sense of what is best for our community. And sense what is best for Lincoln County schools. But please make sure that we're doing what's best for children first. I'd like to share with you just a little bit more information. I've done some research. We did a survey. I went out onto the state website, folks. And I looked for middle schools. Configuration of middle schools, fifth through eighth grade. And this is what I found. There are 156 middle schools in the state of West Virginia. Thirty-one of those schools are in a five-eight configuration. That's 20 percent of the middle schools. Four of those 31 schools made AYP last year. Thirteen percent. Now if you take those four and put it into all middle schools, that's three percent of schools configured five-eight made AYP. Another little bit of information for you. This is a study from Arizona State University. And I apologize for reading, but I think it warrants reading. Few researchers have addressed student achievement outcomes as a function of grade configurations for older elementary age students. Thus, this study was designed to determine differences between students' grade-five reading and math achievement in elementary schools K-5 as compared to intermediate schools grades five, five through six for five academic years. Using archival statewide data, researchers used a rigorous five-step distance-based formula to match elementary schools and intermediate schools on four demographic school characteristic variables. Students in K-5 settings attain statistically significant higher levels of reading and math than their counterparts in the six through eight or the five through eight configuration. I do have a website.
Five through eight.
Okay, so K through five, those students achieve higher than students based on this study than students five through eight configuration. I have a website here that is a 46-page document. I did not copy that and bring it tonight. But I'll be glad to share that website with you if you are so inclined. That's all I have.
I have a double question.
Okay.
Do we have the website?
I will give this to you. It's rather lengthy.
Okay.
And I'll just let you have this.
Okay.
Okay.
In your research, out of 156 middle students in West Virginia, how many made AYP?
Out of 156?
Or whatever your number was.
The only ones I concerned myself with, ma'am, was the 31 that were five-eight configuration. I could go back and get to...
I just wonder what the comparison was.
Okay, out of 156, I can do that for you and be glad to provide that information at a later time. I did not research that. I was only looking at the five-through-eight configuration.
And when you were comparing the K through five academic achievement, I suppose, reading and math, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
With students in five-through-eight, was it all those configurations, like K-5 compared with five-eight, or did you look at the fifth grade in each one or two?
The fifth grade in each one?
Mm-hmm.
I did not. Again, I was just looking at basic configurations of schools.
Okay.
Okay. And again, if you'd like, I could do that for you.
I like that information that you had. I mean, if it's really available.
Won't take but about 20 minutes. It's on the state website. I'll go back and take a look.
She had the same question I had. I'd like to know how many percentage made AYP out of those 156 years.
Okay, I can do that. All right. And in the meantime, I'll give you this website. Thank you.
Sue Burton, West Hamlin.
Good evening. Sue Burton, parent educator at West Hamlin Elementary. And I could just say ditto to what Mr. King said and be finished, but I have a couple of things I'd like to say. I'm here tonight on behalf of our parent group at West Hamlin Elementary. I'm here as an employee, a grandmother, and a community member. And I'm just here to remind you, as Mr. King did, about the surveys that we gave you before. And most of the parents, grandparents, and community members completed the survey to say that we want to keep all of our students at West Hamlin by putting modulars at the school. The last two years, great things have been happening at West Hamlin. And under Mr. King's leadership, I've learned a great deal. But one thing that really stands out, and he said that in his conversation, is if you do what's right for the kids, you'll be okay. Always do what's right for the kids. And we feel that moving any kids from our school would not be the right thing. Because we have 75 fourth graders right now who would be fifth graders moving to Guyan Valley next year. If you take those 75 students, you're also going to take with them 150 parents, 300 grandparents, not to mention aunts, uncles, and cousins. So that disrupts our whole community. And we all know what consolidation does to small communities. And we just feel that moving any of our students out of our school would not be doing the right thing for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sue. Do you have any questions for Sue Burton? Nancy Cook?
She said it.
Oh, good. Ditto. Eddie Smith?
Well, I apologize. I'm like the rest of them. I always stand up for kids, and that's why I'm here. But I want to talk to you about another side of academics, and that's extracurricular. Both has to play in hand-in-hand in developing the child. I want to take this opportunity to thank the board for everything. First of all, give me the position at Guyan Valley this year and then the things that you have helped me to accomplish with parent groups. Cleaning up with Dana and them, cleaning up her locker rooms, concession stands, and so forth like that. I could have had a lot more people with me tonight. Carol said you should take parents. They're taking pictures tonight, so I wouldn't disrupt that. That's like coming between a mama cub and her baby, you know. But I'm here to ask you a favor. Been talking to basketball coaches and baseball coaches and everything about five times since I was principal of Lincoln County dealing with high school, middle school together. We've had this question come up, and the superintendent's handled each time. And that is county schools playing county schools. We always said yes to the matter because of the closeness, the transportation, those kids getting together, knowing each other, so that when we go into high school, that transition plays a big part. But some of us have joined conferences which do not allow that little thing that I call just community pride or county pride development in that they can't play each other because they got a commitment to a conference. I know a lot of counties like Canola, you can come in and play, but they won't send theirs out. Wayne County has it to, they have to play all the teams in the county before they go out. I know talking to my basketball coach, Randy, is helping me fill the schedule there. We've got county schools right now that can't even commit to a basketball game because they've got to wait to their conference since their schedule. There's good and bad about the conference. I've been the conference president one time for six or seven years. I know that when I was at Hamlin, we had to move out because of financial things with the conference. Back then, we actually paid for buses and all that. And we were missing out playing maybe Hearts or playing a Duval or playing a Hamlin. And I'm just here not to throw stones or anything, but to ask you to please consider and make this so that we can get it settled for scheduling. When I stepped into position, I'm not like a lot of others. I don't just get on the phone and start calling up for games. I send out contracts. And I've done that. I have everybody under contract except one school. And I'll be honest with you, why I didn't put them on there, I was saving because Hamlin first told me they didn't have a team. But thank goodness it broke into the point of my JV could play their varsity because we had a week off that week. But I think every school should play everybody in this county. That means Hearts, Duval, Hamlin, and Guyan Valley. Because I think those kids have to be bonded. There are already a lot of us bonded through families. The transportation and the quickness that we get them back at night after ballgames is a lot better going to a Mann or something like that to go to a Duval or a Hearts. You'd be back about an hour or so earlier on a school night. And that's something I want you to look at to see if you can maybe reinforce the rule that's been there, like I say, five times that I was principal, it was worked upon. And each time, the superintendent and the board said yes, county schools have played county schools. Now, I don't want to start anything. I'm sure that if I had a reason I was in a conference, it would be different. But I'm not. I think all schools should play all schools. I think their kids are the most important thing that we have in this community. It makes our community. Guyan Valley, if you notice pride, that's the biggest thing I've pushed over there. And I'm getting it. I'm getting it. I'm not bragging. We've lost one game against the Consolidated CK. But I've got kids that have never played ball before that's playing for me. And I've got people coming out. Our ballgames are bringing $1,300, $1,400. Even JV's bringing $600, $700. That's not, we're not there for the money. We're there for the support, and that's what's happening. People are coming out and they're spending their money on kids and stuff. Our fees are still just three and two. Everywhere we go, there's four and five. We want to keep them at three and two that people can support in economy like we have. But I want to ask the board to consider and think about it. Call your other schools, see what their idea is. But I think that Lincoln County kids, all four middle schools, should be playing each other. And in some sports, I think we should be playing together to compete. We've got four single A's, but they play at a triple A level once they get to high school. But I think we should come together so we can unify these kids in this county on that. Any questions?
What exact sports are you talking about?
I'm talking right now football, basketball, baseball, softball, girls' basketball. What's happening is the conference is getting enough people in it that it might, by the time you play the conference, you might only have two teams to play in the county, maybe one. And you have to select what one you want. I think everybody should play everybody in this county. And that's the way I feel. Yes, sir.
Is the basketball schedule already made up for this?
No, we're waiting on, we're waiting on Hamlin and Duval because they might go in the conference, and that'd change everything to where they might only have to play one game. So we might only get to play one of those kids. My understanding from Randy, he's not here tonight because of doctor's appointment, but he has it all down. And I think that's wrong because let's be realistic. All of us grew up here in the county. That rivalry's still there. But we can bring these kids together so that when we go to this one high school, then that maybe will bring other kids into there. We don't lose kids going to Chavensville or going to Scott or George Washington. They all want to come to this one school. And I think that this is where we started. And it is about kids, but you know, I'm just one voice. You guys make the decision. I'm glad you do and I don't. You know, I give that day up. But if you do anything like, and I know you do, you stand up for kids. You've done that for me. And I'm sure that you'll do it for West Hamlin and the rest of the schools in the county. Do the best for kids. But Fred, that's, right now, if we play tomorrow, I couldn't tell you we play a county school. You know, we're, the schedule's all filled except the county schools, and we've got to wait on their conference. I know this year, Kim, because Hamlin didn't have a team, I could move Duval up in Hamlin's slot so I could play Duval. If I couldn't, they couldn't have played us. You know, that's a loss for the county. Because we had a game last week, and good crowd there.
Big money maker.
Yeah. Well, not only good moneymaker, kids knew each other. I make my kids go and welcome everybody that comes to Guyan Valley. About every county school I've been to, guess what? Their kids come and welcome our kids. And it's that little comrade thing. It's beyond on-the-field stuff. You know what I'm saying?
Can I say something along with that? Because I'm in, you know, I'm in the conference. I didn't, do you want me to sign?
Go ahead and say it, Kim.
Well, I was just going to say that Duval is in the conference. And the reason that we joined the conference was because of scheduling. We had a really difficult time getting a schedule together. Josh Brunfield came in, and he did a phenomenal job, two years undefeated with our team. And he struggled to get a full schedule. Well, for the Duval area, those are natural rivalries for us playing in that conference. When Josh got a schedule, we played a lot like Hannon, and we played, you know, some really small schools. And I felt like that that didn't properly prepare our kids to compete on the triple A level. So right now, Hamlin and Hearts and I are in this conference together, all three of us. And because it makes scheduling easy, it also gives our kids recognition that they otherwise wouldn't get. The conference, in the tournaments, they have like conference tournaments and playoffs, and the kids get recognized. They have cheerleading competitions. So it's, you know, it's a couple of schools from Logan County, Boone County Schools, Hearts, us, and Hamlin and Polka just joined this conference. The problem is, and hospitality at Guyan Valley is great, and I would always like to play Guyan Valley, but there's only so many games you can play. You know, so, you know, if you're not in a conference, then scheduling becomes an issue.
It does to a point. I was a conference president for seven years at Guyan Valley. I was also coaching. We won it about four or five years in a row. You have a lot of rivals because certain counties' people like Boone and them always want it one way or the other, and you have to say no. But the key about what Kim was saying, the conference games at that time and now, is you've got to win. Well, let's be realistic. Guyan Valley might have 200 some kids in the seven, six, seven, eight, correct, six, seven, eight. But when you go to Madison, or you go to Mann, or you go to Chavensville, that's double if you look on your list on the side. You know what I mean? So that makes it a little bit off. Not saying it's not got some benefits, but that same benefits can be done right here with the county too. And still, still the key is if you join the conference, that last game is decided who the conference winners. Your kids might lose a game if I've done that. In other words, if you don't have that perfect record, you're not in that final game. Your season could actually be over with, girl.
And Hearts chooses not to play in the football conference because they feel they can't compete. So that allows them to schedule other games, and certainly that would be an option. The other side of this is that we want to bring our children together. What I found early on is we had to play, you know, teams twice. And it really set a rivalry between the county teams, and then we want to put them together. You know, and they remember the old sexualism and the rivalries. And, you know, I finally decided, you know, we don't need to play the same team over and over again because it causes, so to speak, you know, intense, an intense rivalry that they seem not to get over when they come to Lincoln County High School. Certainly, there's, you know, the SSAC sets a limit on the number of games that you play. And we certainly would have the option, not, there's not every school in the Black Diamond Conference plays in the football division, you know, for the championship. And certainly, we should be able to, you know, work out the football schedule. Basketball, we did have a county tournament and the Gerald Pritchard tournament. And then we were playing regular season games, and all of a sudden, we'd played the same school four times, or five times, or six times. And I really don't think that's good for kids.
Well, you think the principals, the principal makes the decision whether you're in the conference.
Correct, correct. And I did it because of the closeness, the easy travel for us, and the recognition the kids get. Every sport, they recognize kids on all conference teams. And it's not just the teams that win, but it's every school has somebody recognized.
Well, the way they did that is basically depends on how you develop or how you win in the conference. If you're first in football, you might get four. If you're last, you might get one. I like to see it the way we used to have in here, is somebody actually get a panel together, sports writers and coaches, and select an all-county conference team and everything. Now, it sounds good in basketball, for example, I'll be honest with you. I probably, I've asked, I've had 10 to 15 teams want to play me. I can only play eight. JV, I picked up Madison, I picked up Wayne, Process, Crum, all of those. I mean, they would want to play on every level. Ford Gay wants, what I'm saying, they're having the same problems in other places. Wayne County, for example, they have to play each other. They've got five teams, at least three games that they can play. So basketball would be even worse. It'd be the possibility in the conference, if Polka knows in that conference, that actually gets to the point that a Guyan Valley and Hamlin might never play or Guyan Valley, Duval.
I think they're considering in the conference in basketball only playing one game because if there's 10 teams, you can't play 20 games halfway. So you should be able to play each other.
But the trouble is that was it's always a home-to-home maker, moneymaker, bringing in the crowd. You know, in basketball, we go play Guyan Valley, or Hamlin, or Duval, or Hearts, those teams intertwine. You've got two on there. So that's guaranteeing everybody a good share at the gate for the expenses. Just like, for example, the expense for football is, I know I've got $1,200, $1,500 at the end of the season to recondition helmets. I know in basketball, it's one of your biggest raiders is just getting in there the time you pay the officials a little bit you may. I'm not saying what Kim says for her is not right. But I don't think the conference is right for everybody in the county. You can still be in the conference, like she said, Hearts chose not to be.
Now, they chose to be in the conference, but not to participate on the football.
Right, football. But the board here has the option of saying, you know, we're going to play each other in all sports. Then we all have to adjust whatever conference we're in. One time, as the conference, I start, I could have had it up to 40 some kids, 40 some groups around. And I had a group, three or four schools in Boone County, both no. We had the Polkas and the George Worshingtons, some of Wayne County, some of Cavill County. We had that many one then, but it's like everything else, somebody always wants to win. I want the kids to go first. That's what I'm teaching them. If you go out there and play and do your best and show sportsmanship and all that, winning takes care of itself. It might not be the scoreboard.
Well, I can assure...
You know what I'm saying?
I can assure you that if that, we just play each team one time in the conference, and then it'd be up to you whether you play them twice. I will play everybody one time, and I will definitely play Guyan Valley twice. I'll definitely play Hamlin twice, and I'll definitely play Hearts twice. I mean...
See, that's, well, that's what I'm saying. So you'd be agreeable, like they say, if they make the rule everybody has to play county schools, you'd go along with that?
Depending on what, how it affects football, we haven't, I haven't been to the meeting about football.
Let's do this. Let's do this. Let's...
And I want to say one other thing before you say let's do this. Remember, it's not, it's not an easy trip for us when we start having to go to Huntington to pick up schools. You know, when you talk about Thursday nights and getting kids back home, our easy trip is to Boone County, not to Huntington-Vinson and that way.
I don't know. I coached last year.
And I'm pretty sure if Josh was, you and Josh were still coaching, we would have won the conference this year.
Don't be too surprised. Go ahead.
I just, in my understanding that Duval, Hamlin, and Hearts are in the conference and Guyan Valley isn't?
Yes.
Yeah, Hamlin, Hamlin is trying to get back in. Hearts is there only for basketball because they felt like it's competitive there. Duval got in last year, correct?
Yes.
I've heard they might not let Hamlin go back in. They might opt for Polka or somebody like that. But I don't know. That doesn't matter.
I'm just trying to see who's in conference too, you know.
Well, it's kind of like the Big East, you know, who's in the Big East, who's not in the Big East. Those kinds of things. Everybody's kind of moving around. We go 20. Eighteen, eighteen, I'm sorry. Won't you let us chew on this a little bit? Please do. I didn't bring this over here.
And I'm not mad at, you know. I mean, I just wanted to, because we joined the conference.
There's always too much. Thank you, and I'm sorry. I know you've got more pressing things, but I wanted to bring it up because we're having a hard time to schedule the basketball. Right. And I think it's just good for kids. It's been stood up that way in the past, and sort of like Kim said there, she's wanting to play everybody. Well, if you make that a rule, there's no option. Everybody play everybody. And they can still be in the conference.
Well, we haven't had our meeting to see exactly what the rules are, but that was the indication I was given that that's what they were going to do.
So if you make the rule that we have to play each other, that makes it safe for every kid in the county? And then if you want to be in the conference, they have that right to be in the conference. Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you, Eddie. Okay. Appreciate it.
That's it. All right. Presentations. Let's go, Mr. Dallas Blatche, Dr. Dallas Blatche, I'm sorry. Update on the school board.
That doctor might get you a cup of coffee, but not likely. You know about that, right? Might have to pay more for it.
It'd be a weak cup of...
Yeah, yeah, that's right. I liked Eddie's shirt. It says, "Pain is temporary and pride is forever." And I thought about the bond issue, okay? But I am picking up on quite a bit of pride as we get around, visit schools and people out in the community. And I want to thank again the superintendent and Jeff for, you know, helping orchestrate some of those visits. And it's not so important for me to know, although I like to know. It's important for people in the community to begin to think about and to discuss and for us to keep our ear to the ground about, you know, what we're hearing. And it'll be several months before decisions are made. And I think people in the community need to know it'll be a while. You know, there's not some plan and then all at once we're going to share with the community, well, this is what we're doing. Well, that's not the way it's going to happen. We're going to have community meetings in April, and we're leading up to that. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with principals, and we're going to ask each of the principals to put together a committee that will have the principal, a couple of teachers, a couple of parents, and a service personnel. Person on this committee for each school. And then when we have these community meetings in the spring, we want this committee from each school to reflect on what's best for their school and to give some ideas and to make at least a short presentation at those meetings. So our whole purpose is to have an opportunity out in the community for everyone to not only be heard, but to voice their best ideas. We, Jeff and I met today with the assessor, and we'll start talking a little bit down the road about, you know, what it might mean. And so we want to be very clear to people when vote is taken, you know, what's it going to cost you? And so people need to know that upfront. So we had a good meeting this morning. We don't, and I would, I would say we'll have some figures sometime in three or four months. Won't be too soon, but some figures that we can then share very clearly with the community. We are in the process, I don't know if you got the information today, but information to, for the board to employ a bond counselor. And that should be before the board in November or December. It'll take, you know, six, six weeks or more for that process to unfold. But as I talked with David at ZMH, supposed to be here, supposed to be in the mail, okay? Some information. Also, we'll be sharing with the principals tomorrow some of the steps that should and should not be taken in a bond issue. For example, in a bond issue, no employment, none of... For example, in a bond issue, no employee, none of us here should tell anybody how to vote, or to put pressure on people. But we should inform people, and give them an opportunity to know what this is about. And then most importantly, to get grassroots input, and we'll build on the old plan that that's in place, that isn't all that old. But I think we all know, it probably will need to be tweaked and changed a bit. And so again, ultimately, the board would need to make that approval. So, so I think everything looks like, you know, it's on track at this point. I know, I think we're encouraged as we hear people, and sometimes, you know, rumors will have started, and it's important for us to have some time to respond to, to information. For example, one of the statements we heard today is that the taxes were going to be so high, you know, people couldn't afford it. Well, we're not talking figures at this point, and so, but at the right time, we will be able to share very clearly with everyone what it would mean to them. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address any, or I'll be back.
You all have any questions?
I have.
No questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bertie Gant?
You want to be on for the end?
Yeah, let's just wait.
Sounds scary.
Thank you, Dylan.
What is it, did it shut off?
It did shut off.
I didn't know it shut off. Sorry.
You missed me.
I was thinking, I didn't hear. I tune stuff out, I'm a guy, I try to tune out stuff.
That was really, it's getting bad, man.
Do you want another one?
Yes.
Try it.
All right, let's go to our administrative section. We have A, the school volunteers, which was the bus shaft runs, this is for Horse Primary. Hamlin, PK eight. B is the agreement with following parents to provide transportation. And this will be paid for from Medicaid funds or an attachment. Go ahead.
I see that the contract, just the wood, is just the bus kicker, is that what that is?
Yeah. I guarantee it is. That's one of the buses. That's one of the buses.
Okay.
Seat form, form, right now. See here, C, an agreement for the following supervisor, as a supervisory aide, Donna Perry. D is the following adult student to run the school bus. It's Christina White. And E, we have to revise, to purchase a service contract to Southwestern Community Action Council. And I believe that is an attachment. Can you see that?
Could I ask you?
Go ahead.
It says on the correct cause, could someone speak to what correct cause? Is this an increase, decrease?
It's an increase.
It's an increase?
I will explain what happened, that's why I'm here today, I thought you might have a question. What happened was, the young lady at Southwestern that gave me the numbers is new, and she was looking at the last names of different employees, and when she gave me the numbers for the contract, she gave me the numbers for the wrong people. So this is correct, the mistake that she made.
Okay, so you're keeping the same number personnel, but the actual personnel's-
It's just the salaries were higher for the two different people, yes. And I asked her to send me a spreadsheet of all the salaries of all the staff that work for us through them, so that I could verify that I had the correct salary. So I do have that, it's confidential information, but I do have the verification that those are the actual salaries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have F, we have the interventionists for Hamlin, PK eight, West Hamlin, Midway, and Duval. Think about that. From what I understand, it was Danny Daley.
That's right.
Was the big man coming through with some, some funding, through Ed Jobs.
Ed Jobs, no, it's some more of the extended, most money for the bodies.
Good for like one?
It's good for one here.
Is that completely discretionary?
It has to go forward, salaries, personnel, yes.
That's big.
Now, is this one person?
Yeah.
Four people?
No.
One person per school?
Mine include the firm Sig grant.
Oh, yeah, we have the Sig, the Sig grant.
Our Sig grants were just approved, our Sig grants were just recently approved, and we have written interventionists into those grants. So now that the money is here, we would like to post those shots. Last year, we contracted through RISA, but we have found that the people who bid on the shots are on our sub list, it'll be a lot faster if we can just post them here and get those people to work very quickly, to provide intervention to the students. So some of those salaries will be paid with the Sig grant, and then one or two will be paid in the Ed Jobs money.
Is it for like, Duval and Midway, I was thinking that this is just one, one person? Is it two people?
Two people.
Two people, four people altogether?
Two part-time people for Duval.
Okay.
And one-
That's what I could figure out.
Okay, wait a minute.
Somebody tell me again.
Yeah. Go over this again, how many do they need?
I can speak to the Sig grant.
So there's two at, like?
I think in order to make the needs of Duval, because it's the larger school, Danny, this is, I'm trying to recall what Danny told me. I think that Danny said that he wanted two part-time people, that we could find two part-time people at Duval, and then one part-time person at Midway. That's thirty hours a week.
For thirty weeks.
Right.
And West Hamlin?
And then West Hamlin will have two part-time people funded through the Sig grant. Hamlin, PK eight, will have one part-time person funded through Sig grant.
It's not indicated on here, we know.
Yeah, that's what I was-
It's just got A, part-time, which sounds like one person's-
Well, that's what I was saying, I was sort of impressioning it.
Is that the job description you're looking at?
We just post a part-time interventionist.
Okay, I think that we were just asking for permission to post them.
Oh, I see.
You want to say?
You see? Yeah, we did, now listen, we read everything literally, okay? So you have to be very concise, because we don't know the difference.
I didn't, I didn't type that.
Ask you beforehand.
Can I ask another question?
It's great.
If we have two part-time people, is there some reason that you can't have one whole-time person?
Yes. Because we, a lot of these people are, they are retired teachers, they make quality interventionists, and a retired teacher does, can't come back to work full-time.
Some of them don't want to.
Somebody, it's not that we couldn't do it, it's just-
Right. Or they prefer not to, because it will interfere with their retirement.
They're more energetic, probably, they just work.
So that was the reasoning, because we're wanting to make sure that we get quality people in there.
Okay, thanks.
Do you foresee all these being subs? I mean, all these will probably, our subs already?
But most of these people that are interested in these positions did this last year, but we contracted with them through RISA. So whether we were posting this through RISA or here, these people were willing to bid on them anyway. Do you know what I'm saying? So it's going to affect our sub list regardless.
So how many interventionists will that make altogether in the county? Do you know? As I said, you're six, so how many others do we have? Do we have any others?
Well, we have-
That's it.
This is just to post, post the jobs, one, that's it.
This is it, no more interventionists.
So I assume then it's up to the principal, like if they want to use their two people at Duval, they can use them at the same time or different times a day, however they want to do it.
It's up to the principal.
I think this is really commendable, that you've come up with grant money to provide these services, I'm sure that's great.
We need money. True. Talk to Danny Daley. All right. All right, you want to go to the administrative section? Does anybody have any extra questions on the administrative section?
I'm moved.
I second.
All those in favor of approving administrative section, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, what else happened? Let's go to fundings.
So you guys have a blue screen, like the invoices to be paid? Have any questions on any of those?
I'll ask you later.
Okay, have you thought?
And you have the, the personnel, the certified report?
Do you want to start on that, or you want to do that?
I don't know, just, you want to go ahead and, let's go ahead and approve the fundings.
I'm ready.
All right? All those in favor of approving the fundings section, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, what else happened? Go ahead.
You want to go ahead and do personnel? Do you guys want a really quick version, or do you want an overhead version? No, I could go either way.
I want a good version.
A good version, okay.
I want to know what we got here, so.
Okay.
My sale.
Okay. Let's start off with our enrollment.
I'll turn it off.
Do you know if we can get part of the lights, like half on?
Oh, you probably do. Yes. I straight, where's that? Where's that raising at?
You have to reach way up.
We're not watching.
You have to stand.
Do I need to get the?
Let me get the other one.
Just turn those buttons on.
I'll be the energy mayor, just set screw something.
Get that one, bud.
I can't take that.
I can't take that.
That's good.
That's good.
Okay, this is, of course, enrollment is the most important factor that we have to deal with. Funding is based on enrollment. Now, I just want to show you guys a chart. This goes from nineteen ninety-six all the way up to eleven, twelve, and it's kind of slid on the page there. But, you know, you can see, we went down, and we're kind of creeping back up a little bit. Now, we have reported for second month, three thousand six hundred ninety-five. Now, I think that number's going to be adjusted just a little bit, but that's the number that will be used for our funding for next fiscal year. The year that we're operating on is students that were enrolled in ten, eleven. So all our funding is going to be based on an enrollment of three thousand six hundred and seventy-six kids. Okay, that's the most important thing you need to know.
Right.
Yes. Everything is based on that number. Okay. I want to talk about our employees. Okay? The top part is the darker colors, let's go over here, this is eleven, twelve, this is the year that we're in. This is our total employees, that's our professional people and service people who are funded through the formula. This doesn't include any grant people or any other bummer people, these are just the people that need to be paid through the formula. So we have a total, oh, I'm sorry, I should give you guys, it's in the certified professional, and it is B. Okay, so four hundred eighty-seven, three hundred and seven, or four eighty-seven point three seven six, that's professionals and service people. Now, we want to know, okay, out of all those people, how many are we actually getting money for? We're only getting money for four hundred and forty of those people. So that gap has to come out of any excess money that we have. And that's the thing that throws you into deficit, that, that gap. Okay? Funding increases, like if you look at this year here, we were funded for four hundred and thirty-four, for eleven, twelve, we're funded for four forty, so that's an increase of six point seven, okay? So that's because our enrollment went up a little bit, we got a few more positions, but we ended up getting, having more people than what our funding went up. So we are currently, right now, operating with forty-six point four three one over the formula. Okay, is everybody, is that good? Everybody understand all that? Okay. Now, I broke it down between our professionals and our service people. This group here is professionals only. And you can see our history, you know, this is O seven O eight, and go all the way through eleven, twelve. Okay? For professional people, this is all your teachers, all your administrative people. We are currently being funded for two hundred and seventy-four point six six positions, okay? We actually have employed three hundred and seven point four five, okay? Any questions on that? And you can see, you know, we're kind of on an upswing.
Are some of these funded another way, other side?
No, this is strictly just formula positions, is all I'm talking about right here.
None of these are funded through a grant or anything else?
No, no. And these are strictly formula positions. And I'll talk about all these other people in a little bit, but I just want to get, get this, because this is the money. Here's our service people again, O seven O eight, you know, we went down a little bit, now we're kind of curving back up. Here's our funding for this year, we're being funded for one sixty-six point two eight five, and we have employed one seventy-nine point nine two six. So there's our over the formula, thirteen point six four one.
Can you keep track of how much money that translates?
Yeah, I have it on another little spreadsheet. Okay, so pretty clear?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we're going to look at this unfunded chart, which should be chart C. And this is just kind of how we're, how we're going, you know, we went back to seven eight, we were carrying forty-three point eight eight total unfunded people, we, you know, kind of went down, and now we're back on an upswing, okay? And that's service and professionals. And then I did some numbers here, like from O eight, O nine, there was a change of, we went down twelve, and we went down one, then we went back up, and then we're back up again. Let's look at just, this is professional people only, you know, we were twenty-three, we went sixteen, nineteen, twenty-six, now we're back up to thirty-two. Of course, now, remember we did those counselors? That kind of hit us a little bit. And then we've had overages in these classes, and, you know, and just several things going on. Here's our service people, we were over twenty in O seven O eight, and we went down, 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 and, and we're just kind of back up just a little bit, and here's the changes from year to year. Okay, does that all sound pretty good to everybody? Okay, now, let's go to chart A, page A in the certified ones. Now, you know, a lot of times we'll have questions, how many employees do we actually have? So I've shared this with all of our directors, so everybody should know. And I'll give you details as to who's in these positions and where they're at and everything. For administrative and other professionals, that's people who aren't teachers, we have thirty positions, and that's all funding sources. That's formula people, grant people. For teachers and professional instructional people, we have three hundred and twenty-one point five people. So total professionals, three hundred and fifty-one. And here's where we get into the other, other funding. Two point five of those people right here are funded through state grants. Thirty-six point five five of those are funded through federal grants. Five of those are local funding, who have no funding source, it just comes out of our extra money. That leaves me with our formula positions that I just showed you the charts on. There's our formula funding, and there's what we're over. The prior year, we were over twenty-six point seven, when I compare these apples to apples. Now, I know there's a few adjustments that I have to make to this thirty-two, and it's not on this chart, I'm just showing you, it's just on this one here. When I look at, I'm carrying thirty-two professionals, I also know those five people, I'm carrying those also, and there's who they are, there's my notes. Those five people, who, whose positions aren't funded through the state day formula or special grant, are the treasurer, your transportation director, your maintenance director, your food service director, and our technology person. So I have to add back in five people. And I know I have three people that are funded through Medicaid. So that gives me thirty-four point seventy-nine positions, there's really no funding for, and I'll do an estimated cost of sixty thousand, it's like two point two million, eighty-seven thousand. Okay? Plus this. Service people, you want to know how many aides we have? Forty-nine. We have forty-six bus drivers. And these are counted on MTEs, if they're over two hundred days, it's more than one,[1778.52] so a one person could be a one point two position, okay? We have forty-six bus drivers, thirty-two point five cooks, twenty-eight point eight four eight custodians, two LPNs, six maintenance workers, four point eight mechanics, thirty-two point seven eight secretary slash coordinator positions. Of those, point five one is funded through a state grant, twenty-one point five are funded through federal grants, no local positions, so here's the formula number that I'm looking for, a hundred and seventy-nine. We're going to be funded for one hundred and sixty-six point two eight five, so that leaves me thirteen point six four one that aren't funded. Now, I have a couple adjustments that I, I know that I have to do. I know that four of those are funded through Medicaid. I know that three of them aren't funded through Step Seven, so that brings me down to six point six four one. Average cost of thirty-five thousand, it's two hundred and thirty-two thousand. So, combined total of people, we have five hundred and fifty-three point four three eight positions. And there's your state funding three, this is service and professionals both. There's fifty-eight positions funded through federal grants, five local, four hundred eighty-seven formula positions. Now, you know, we're required to have so many teachers, I know Dawn and Steve, you guys are probably aware of that, so I want to have put that number. We are required to have two hundred forty-seven point one four, and we have two hundred and seventy-two teachers, so we're way over that formula there, so we're really good on that. And, is there any questions on this? Okay. Now, let's look at D in the Certified List. Okay, this is, here's your professional administrative people, and there's that thirty number that I gave you right here. And then, here's where, what that is, we have, we have ten central office, two administrators at Duval, two at Hamlin Pre-K, dah dah dah. So, there's twenty-six, what we call administrative positions, and then, we have some central office people who are not administrators, but they're not teachers either. And so, we just go, you know, it's just same, same scenario, total state, federal, local, formula. And what I did here is I put, here's how many we had when we did the Certified List last year. So, last year, we had twenty point four five, so we have no change in this group at all. Okay, this group is our teachers, our professional instructional group. Here's our totals, and there's how many we have for school, there's our funding, and then, here's our formula people, two eighty-seven. Last year, we had two seventy-six, so we have ten point five. Now, Tricia and I went through all of those, and we kind of know who they are. If you want to know, you know, I think Trish, she don't know, she don't remember, I'll kind of remember.
I've got notes.
Okay, so, do y'all want to ask any questions on that?
How many are over? One, just get this one over. Some of those counselors, they picked up. Counting one, two, three, and a half. Two overages, two pre-K that had been federally funded through Title One. No longer are they allowed to be paid through Title One, the county must pick those up. So, those are two.
So, we added, well, pre-K will be paid for those, right?
Yes. Which we added, but those were two that were already in existence that became counted, okay? We added a pre-K at Hards. And we added a kindergarten at Hards. And we added a kindergarten at West Hamlin. We added a half science in order to have the driver's ed. I think, did that get it? We added a kindergarten at Midway.
And those were all?
And that's separate from the overages.
Yes, yes. Okay, now, if you see names in red, those are just people that we had to put in for the Certified List. That means there's kind of a vacancy there, we just put someone in, it's just to key us that those people really don't belong there. Okay. So, now, go to page one, which should be, now, let's go here to E, I think this is E. And this has who all these people are. This is all your administrators, so if you want to know who they are, you want to know what the funding source is, you're going to look at the funding sources here. There's those red names, of course, those are not our employees anymore. Here's the people who are other instructional, not administrative, not professional instructional, just to share with you. Then, we're going to go to pages one through thirteen, and this is where we look at, this should have everybody and the county. This is our central office people. This is our special ed people. And it'll have the MTE over here. They're right down to Duval, and just pretty much anything you want to know about Duval, it's like how many first grades, okay? Two, how many seconds, how many thirds, how many fourths, who's in this position, how are they funded, what's their MTE? Just, that's just information for you guys, okay?
Hey, Birdy, when you do your budget for the next, for this coming year, how many, how many positions are you going to budget for?
Well, I'd say it's going to be real close to what we currently have. And what'll happen, we'll probably start about December, we've got our new preliminary comps that says, here's how many people we're going to fund you for next year. Trish and Jeff will meet with all the principals, and they'll probably say, is there anything we can do without? And then, they'll give me numbers.
So, that's kind of, it's kind of up in their ear right now?
Yes, yes, it is, yeah.
How close do we get to personnel section? Which is one more point?
Yes.
I thought, that's what I was kind of, that's just what I was really wanting to know, is, you know, whenever we budgeted for this year, you know, I think it's what she said, if there's any fluff, because I know whenever Kim come by was asking about the interventionists and different things like that, and then, what we were going to budget for the next year, to see where we, where we would be.
And we will probably, you know, we may get one extra position, but I don't see much changes in the number of positions funded. So, you know, we'll just probably take, these take a real hard look at everything.
Because, because when we were looking at our budget last time, we had two hundred thousand dollars, basically, that we called it, that hasn't been budgeted in.
And like I said, you know, it's that, it's that personnel that really eats up your budgets. You know, that's the biggest, you know, that's the biggest chunk of your budget.
That overage is about two and a quarter million, right?
Of course, you know, if you saw all those reds, that, no one's in those positions, so we're not paying insurance, or we're not paying retirement on those people, so, you know, we're just right now paying a sub wage in those people that are in red. So, that saves us some money. Okay, good.
Thanks, is there a good, do you put a dollar amount on the cost of a unfunded service job or unfunded professional?
Oh, I'm sorry, sixty thousand. Yes, I did sixty thousand on, on, oh, yes.
It's on D, or that too?
Yes, okay, let me do service here real fast, I have to talk to you guys. Um, here's our service, and you have a booklet for service.
She, she mentioned it, she was asking.
That's thirty-five thousand.
For professionals, I've got sixty thousand, service thirty-five.
And what page are you on, Birdy?
Okay, do your service booklet.
Is this the first page?
And same thing here, this is the people, we had, here's the formula, here's what I turned in last year, here's the changes. And, you know, here's how many that's funded. I do my adjustments. And then, here's the average cost of a service person, and here's the average cost of your service.
You got me on another page.
Oh.
You got me back on A, which is the same.
Yeah, because that's got service and professionals both on that.
So, a service person typically costs sixty thousand dollars?
No, service thirty-five, professional sixty.
Okay. And then, that, does that include fixed costs or not?
Yeah, yeah, that's just an estimate of everything.
Sixty and thirty-five per, per, thank you.
Okay. I hope you're better informed than you were.
Pretty good.
All right, everybody in pretty good shape. All right, let's go to our personnel section, personnel schedule. We have a revised schedule, we've all seen that. Thanks, Birdy.
A lot of work involved in that.
And you all have had a chance to read this personnel schedule.
Uh, just wanted to point out, the reason it was revised is that we had one of the titles wrong, that the people were on there at the bottom, it was in red, it was over the vassals instead of a list under retirement and resignation. But, uh, just wanted to make sure that you all know that everything that we instituted before is, is on here.
Do we need to mark out C one? Because we're hiring or?
No, no.
No, because it won't be effective, I'll tell you that.
Right.
Guys, I got to recuse myself on C two, Chastity Graham was my sister.
Yeah.
Chastity.
Pleasure hard.
Yeah, pleasure hard.
We're sorry. Okay, so. I'm sorry, now, after we've had some of the administrative moves around this year, after all of this, are we down to just having two assistants open at the two middle schools?
Three, now, after this, we down.
What will we?
We will be posting for an assistant at Hamlin Pre-K eight, an assistant in.
Sky Valley, LCFJ.
Uh, an assistant at Blenky County High School and one at Sky Valley Middle. And, you know, I want to go ahead and say that there will be no addendums, you know, don't want to be sending addendums that we're not allowed to send. So, what you see each time, unless we've made an error on something. We have to say, you're the only one that's ever made sure of that since I've been here for twenty years. We always had addendums slapped on us at the last minute. Well, that was, that was because of the State Department, they allowed it. That's what they would tell us to do, do addendums, do addendums. But, now, you guys, as a local board, we are not allowed to do that, so I'm not going to be sending you guys anything after what we've sent it out, unless now, we get it to, what, five days prior to, and then, if we have an addendum, three days, I can do it that way, but not after three days.
Okay?
Nothing, right. So, want to make sure that. Do what I'm supposed to be doing. No surprises, hopefully, no surprises.
So, I make a motion to approve A, B, C one, D, E, and F?
I move, oh, I say.
All those in favor to approve those particular items, please say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that will approve C two, and I'm recusing myself from, I can't make the motion, sorry, get somebody else.
And I'll say.
All right, all those in favor to approve C two?
Aye.
All opposed, now, is that, here we go. Comments, concerns? And we've already progressed a little bit of the classroom special West Hamlin. I know that Dana's here, I think at the last board meeting, we talked about getting some modulars, because that's what the people really wanted. And you've been checking up on that, and what do you have?
Well, we're currently negotiating with Putnam County, and we believe that you'll be pleased with the results of that. We believe we can get one large unit or ones, and one, plus one slightly smaller, or we can move the modular at Eightville, got a cost of seating for twelve thousand five hundred to move it to West Hamlin. The units are, at Putnam County are in slightly better shape because of the way they were built, keep the water off of them, but the one at Hards Primary is in much better shape than I expected. And I believe it would be a temporary fix for West Hamlin, if you choose the larger classrooms at Hards Primary.
Do you have an idea of what the transfer, what the cost of those would be from Putnam County?
I think it'll be slightly greater, because there'll have to be some, uh, longer distance one. And I think they'll have to do some, I think it'll have to be hauled differently because it doesn't have the steel and wheels like Hards Primary does, so I think it'll be a slight increase.
So, we, I know the last time we were talking about a brand new modular, it costs like two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But we're not even there, we're not even talking about that, we're talking about something different. Modular, we're going to be able to put that in for probably around fifty thousand dollars.
I think probably moving them thirty, and then, we'll have some additional costs that my guys plan to do, like hooking up the sewer and electric and, I want to build the decks and do some things to reduce that cost, so I think it'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-five thousand after maintenance does their part of the job.
It's a huge difference, it's awesome, that's all.
Do these have foundations, or they just scored, I don't know.
The one at Hards Primary still has the steel structure with the wheels, we can, they're mobile classrooms. The one at, at Lakeside, the maintenance department built those, and so, they, they moved them like you would move a house. And then, when they moved into Lakeside, they actually had to build a flooring. But the flooring is in good shape, I could see all the wood trusses and everything, and the roof's in pretty good shape. And the reason those held up better is because they put at least a foot overhang on all four sides of the modular to keep the water off the siding, and so, there, that's the reason they held up better. And they, and they had gutters on them, and they did some things in addition to what the companies that just manufacture these do, make them last longer.
So, they're different from the ones in New York?
Yes.
I just, so, you're talking about this cost of moving the two thousand dollars off of them? I mean, I'm just trying, is that twenty?
I think it'll be closer to twenty-five, because I think there'll be a slight increase in the cost to move the ones in Lakeside.
But I'm saying, we're adding that to the thirty-five, is that true? Or is that the end of the thirty?
No, that's included, I think, if the maintenance department does the other items that's not included in just moving the units, the sewer, the water, the electric, and the decking, then I believe somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-five.
The whole cost?
For the whole cost, everything included.
Another word, Dan, it's probably where you have to have a sprinkler system put in there?
No, no, they have their own exits, a means of egress on both sides of the building, so no, you do not have to have a sprinkler system.
We going to lose any, you going to lose any playground with them, whenever we put those in?
No, we, we did.
Because I was going to say, if we want to lose like a basketball court or something like that, we probably need to replace it for the kids, somewhere else.
The, the location that me and Mr. King looked at, at worst case scenario, they might lose their storage building, but we wouldn't even have to do that if, if they can't, it wouldn't break my heart if it's gone. It's an eyesore, the storage building that's. It's an eyesore, the storage building that's there is an eyesore, and I'd kind of like to get rid of it anyway, so, I think we're on the same page with that. And I can use the slab that the old storage building sits on, its concrete slab, to help support my modular.
Can I add a, I'm sorry, can I add to that? I, I recently had my male parent volunteers who come and do all the playground, Black Cartwright and all those, and they said it was an eyesore, and they're willing to tear that down free.
I, I think for, for the metal part of the building, I think we could get numerous people to tear it down for free. The part cost the metal right now, I think that won't be a problem, be rid of it.
But I think, I think this is something that would be, should be a temporary fix. And I'm just telling you, the reason I say it should be a temporary fix is because we have to put something in the bond, to try to get something built permanently open. Because I know my ki, I have children that are in the modular at New Ball, I call it the annex, because it was like what it was called whenever I was, well, not that one, the black one. But it's just, I, you know, I don't think over the long run, I don't think, people, I know it's, it's something that is a temporary fix right now, I really don't think over the long run you're going to be happy. I don't. And I'm telling you, the reason I'm, I'm telling you that is because I've had four kids that go through them. And I really believe that we really have to work hard on the bond, so we can get something built at that school. And you need to take charge of that over there. That, I mean, you know, to, I mean, you need to, you know, to find out whenever they come through, with Dr. Blanketship comes through, and the people get over there and they meet together, and they meet with you to find out exactly what they want, what we need to do over there, so that we can fix this problem.
And we want it to look nice. I mean, I'm not saying the modulars are going to be ugly, but you have a beautiful school there. And eventually, I mean, I've got grandchildren that are going to be going there, I want it to look nice, I want it to be as pretty as what it is now, if not prettier.
And I'd like to commend Dana on the effort that he has taken to find these modulars, Ray Curry and Jeff Meek. They have done an excellent job, because I made 275,000 dollars for a modular, and I think everybody knows that's what it means. We don't really have that, and I don't think we'd even budget for that. But to be able to do this, and please, just make sure it's a temporary fix. I mean, really, because I know you don't want that for the next 15 years. You don't want that there.
Relative question. Back when we were at West Hamlin, we talked about the restaurants.
Yes, sir.
Now, now, if this occurs, do, are those no longer needed? Are they desirable, not needed, or where are we with the restaurants that we talked about?
We're, we're taking small steps to alleviate the pressure of the restaurants.
You're talking like a politician here.
I think that's the best way to be right now. In, in a, in a utopic world, we have a restroom in every pre-K classroom. And, and with, with not knowing for sure which way we were going, if modular is the way we're going, then we need to go to work and see how we're going to address, even in short term, when the modular gets there, we can use that, once the water's hooked up, to, if nothing else, to go for a restroom break.
Well, the reason I say, because at one time we were talking in terms of maybe spending 40,000 dollars to build these restrooms and all that down there, making it a permanent part of the school. And I'm just wanting to make sure I'm understanding now, that it seems like we're now transferring and going to use that money to bring the modulars in to set that up in lieu of the restrooms.
And the modulars have a bathroom?
The modulars come with a restroom in them. So that, that could alleviate some of the problems.
Two, two classrooms will share one restroom.
Just make sure the door's locked on the other side.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. They're just exactly like the one in the bay.
So there's two restrooms in each modular, is that what you're saying?
One restroom in each modular. There's two restrooms, you're adding two restrooms.
Okay.
Four classes, four classrooms.
Four classrooms and one restroom.
And to be honest, until we tried, I couldn't give you, I could give you a wild guess, if any restrooms will take some of the pressure off. But, you know, like I say, if, if price were not, if, if we wanted to do, in my opinion, and you're asking my opinion, if we wanted to do it the best, we would still put restrooms where the pre-K rooms are located currently, so that those children wouldn't have to go out into the hallways on a restroom break. It would be a lot easier for the teacher and the teacher's assistants to control that. It would better fulfill the requirement of the universal pre-K requirements.
Well, I understand that, you know, in utopia, there were a lot of things we'd do. And just getting back to, you know, we talked there as, as what appeared to be something that was somewhat urgent, we need to address this, and once again, we were kind of looking at those terms. But, you know, because we have to think, you've heard, you've heard Mr. Matthews talk about here, how much money we think we have left that's not encumbered for some use here, and I'm sure Miss Danzy would emphasize that. We have to look at all the things we're facing. Now, I'm just trying to think, the money that's going to be spent to do this, and then, you know, I keep thinking, we got 200,000 dollars, and then how much we got left, and thinking of other means we have. And I want to be able to erase that 40,000, thousand from my mind for at least temporarily, just to be a, you know, a sudden urgency.
Well, and, and just, Mr. Smith and I talked about, you know, as compared to putting one on each pre-K room, what, if we build it like the modulars and let two classrooms share one, that, that could be an option. We've, we've been brainstorming and talking about a lot of things. So, again.
Well, there's a lot of things even you can do as a principal, as far as scheduling of that Houston student, right?
There are, I, there are certain things you can do, but when you got, when you got 25 kids standing in a one-holder, it's tough.
Oh, I've been there.
I have a question. Whenever, you know, we were doing this, talking about these modulars, and I was just going to recommend something to you, you could talk to Ms. Clayton or Ms. Workman, because they have modulars at their building, because it's new.
Correct.
And there's a lot of, there's, I think there's a lot of things that I've noticed with my children that you run into, especially, it depends on what grade you have in your modulars, when you're talking about PK, K, whenever they go over to eat, and the amount of time that they have, because I know Tom's a big factor, that's a big constraint. And maybe, I just, I'm just throwing a recommendation out there, because it's tough, it's very tough. It's very tough for the little ones, because they gotta get their jacket on, get their jacket off, they gotta eat, and they gotta have help, because they can't.
I totally agree.
They're just little. Tommy.
And that's why I say that, you know, I, I still, my personal opinion is I'd still like to see restrooms on pre-K rooms, so that they wouldn't have to go to the modulars, because that isn't a permanent fix, as you have said.
Well, what I'm saying is, I'm talking about whenever we get moved into the modulars, that's, I'm, you know, I'm talking about, because they have to go out with the modulars to go into the school, they have to go to the lunchroom. That's what I'm talking about. And, you know, and I don't know if, if you can address that with what classes that you could put over there, or whatever, but I was just saying.
Already in the works.
Yeah. It may not be a bad recommendation. Talk with Kim, or talk with Cheryl, because they have to do those sort of things. It's just new. It's new. Whenever you got kids in those, in those things, that you kind of feel for them, you feel for the teacher. All right, let's move on. The, we got Feralsbury, this is an attachment, the old Feralsbury School.
Reason that you guys have that attachment, we had a phone call from a pastor, Mullins, inquiring what might happen to that particular building if the county commission would decide to vacate. And because he had a conversation with someone that indicated that they may, the county commission may want to go to the Hart's Middle School once, once that becomes vacant. He was just inquiring as to what might happen to that building, because I live right now, they are renting a, really using it for church. And so Brenda did some research, and of course that shows that if the county commission would vacate that building, excuse me, it would come back to us. We would revert back to board. But then he did go on to say that he had had another conversation, and that it's possible that the county commission would not vacate it, but may also want to use the Hart's Middle School as well. So, we just wanted you guys to be aware that there is that reversion clause in the deed, in case they vacate. So this was just kind of a heads up, to let you all know.
But we haven't heard anything from the county commission.
We have not.
They would have to let us know.
They would, they would. And we have not heard from them. Not to say that they are, this was just a, an inquiry from someone that is interested, you know, I think he was interested as far as the building and what with him, because he's currently using it, using it under where it's happening.
They have to continue to use it as a community center. That's the only use they can make.
Did you call the county commission superintendent?
Yes.
While you're on that subject, I talked with some people from Hart's tire department, they were asking about the same thing, they're not wanting the building, but what they're wanting is if there's anything that they could use, like a nice machine, the equipment, how it building, and not all of it, they said they'd like to have a nice machine, if you're not moving it, and they'd like to have some big pots, if you're not moving them over to the school.
At Hart's Middle?
At Hart's Middle.
Okay.
Or the elementary either.
Okay.
They had, the garden department.
Yeah, we had to check. I don't, I don't know what disposition.
Well, sometimes they auction them all.
So you have to auction, you can't give them.
I don't think, I don't think you can.
We told them that we could let them know, you know, we have an auction, whatever it is.
Yeah, that's the auction dollar.
I think so.
We'll find out what we all want to use, and whatever we all use, just have an auction.
Yes, I think you have those.
I have those about once a year.
Okay.
I can have it twice a year.
If need, if needed.
There are other schools.
Yes, we can give it to, I'm sure that's what Diane would probably foresee if she needs those in any of the other schools.
Dana has, because that's, that's the equipment been taken out of, from Hamlin Junior High School?
There's not a lot left.
More to go, Peter?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
All right. Let's move to the, the action plan for public education in West Virginia in support of five legislative priorities, and that's on the, an attachment. Who's, I have a.
Dr. Markle had requested that all counties have the board to look at the priorities that the State Department of Ed will be taking to the legislators for, for their consideration. And, of course, the first one, trying to get something about OPEP taken care of. That's one of the things that the Department of Ed will be asking the legislators to look at, to take care of, try to alleviate the burden from the counties. Looking at, their second one is educator and service personnel pay raise.
Can we put that bold, Brent? Can we say that?
Their third priority is for techno, technology infrastructure, making sure that all of their schools, you know, have the infrastructure for all of the technology that is coming down the pipe. This year, they did not adopt social studies textbooks. They are looking at making sure that the classrooms are equipped in order to use technology as far as instructional, instead of the textbooks itself, and that is something that we had to plan for. So that's another priority. They're wanting to lift the RISA funding cap. That's their fourth priority that they're going to ask for during the legislative session. And to have a new mentor program, educator mentoring and induction program. The one that they have in code now, that we're, the policies that we're following, they feel is not adequate as far as the mentoring, and they're wanting to have the legislators to change that policy, change the language, so that we're.
They can be compliant?
So that we are more free to, to utilize, because they have us boxed in right now, as far as our, the way we mentor new teachers. It's ineffective.
I don't see how you can know with the number of hours, and I just don't see how you can know. I mean, I love to.
And we want to see that change, because, you know, I think Campbell County has requested a waiver, and they have a different, and actually received the approval for their waiver to do this. And I've heard Senator Plow talking about this, and he was very much in favor of looking at and maybe modeling the new language after what Campbell County has in place. So, those are the five that they're going to present, and she feels like if she has the support from all of the 55 counties, that's going to, you know, make much more of an impact when they present this. So they're requesting a letter from the president of the board stating that we do support this, and if you guys are okay with that, we will draft a letter and have Mr. Matthews to sign that, and we will send that on.
If I had to draft, I would smoke a cigarette.
I make a motion.
All those.
Girls want a raise.
Thanks, Ray. Uh, there's a motion, a second, to approve and adopt the following priorities. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, the ayes have. Seeing there's nothing else on the agenda, I make a motion that we adjourn to October 27, 2011, 6 o'clock at Midway Elementary.
Make sure you understand anybody from that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the ayes have. We adjourn. Man, it was a spectacular meeting. Hey there, how are you?